And if you have not had a chance to take a look at the minutes, please do that. We'll be looking for a motion.
I mean, a motion is very specific.
Is there a second? Okay, any comments, questions, concerns? I know it was a long time ago. Uh, you're only, you're in charge.
Thor, did you attend that meeting?
I did not. No.
You heard any more about it?
No, I haven't. To be honest with you, I forgot about it until I was looking at the minutes today and then I was all the way down and suddenly I answered something.
You were watching a football game, right?
Um.
That's what Mike said.
Yeah.
Let me see what happened to him.
Yeah. They'll be off these Saturday, Sunday night.
Nothing has changed. I mean, you know, there's still a For Sale sign there. I haven't seen anything as far as, you know, under contract or anything like that. So, any other comments, questions? And all those in favor of the minutes? Good time? How was the post? All right, new business, resignation. Link is taking a job where he will be teaching apprentices from the shipyard during the time period that we will be here. So, he is resigning. And the question that we had coming into the meeting was whether or not that was going to take place effectively today or not. We didn't know that. Apparently, it is. I see it, you know, I see it here.
Frank, well, exactly, the phone's running.
Tires, tires head.
That's right. Walla Shane.
You can use the bad side.
I'm asking Jake.
All right, next on the new business, Dan and Jane Archibald are going to speak to us, initially anyway, about a project that they want to eventually bring to us for further review. You guys want to bring everything on up here?
Sure.
We can go from there, but it'd probably be easier than you guys trying to receive the screen from back there.
Yeah.
Unless you've committed it to memory.
No.
So, they're not really ready, but they're just coming in. We're not even at pre-app stage, so I'm hoping to keep it down to like 15 minutes.
Yeah.
Let's just say we didn't get our information electronically like we were told. It just came, so... And I didn't think we were handing out any paper or anything, but...
More paper.
So, just so you know, when we're submitting stuff, it's 14 days in advance, so these guys can all get it in advance. We didn't know versus getting it tonight.
Well, no, this is just some basic stuff. If you have any questions, that they might have.
Yeah, they can make notes on it.
They can make notes on it. It's nothing, it's just...
The 15-minute clock is ticking.
Okay, so you guys can kind of give us a heads up as to what the plan is, and then we'll go from there.
Well, in a nutshell, that's the plan. What's working behind it there? We purchased a 50-foot lot of land off of New Sir Benson in May, and Jane and I would like to build a campground there. And what we envision at the campground is basically a very rustic, state-like RV park, campground park, where it's basically back to basics, nothing. You're not going to reel on any kind of swimming pools or things of that nature. The campsite will be 5,200 square feet, 5,200 square feet each. That's per the acting guidelines and the actual, you see the green, that's everything inside the wetland buffer zone, so we don't have, we don't need to do... Everything we want to do is within the boundary of DC. And it's going to be approximately 55 sites in total, five cabins, five to eight, 10 sites. We already listed all the, all the plans here.
With their 57 acres, and we have only actually utilizing 14 of the acreage for the campground itself.
That's the only way that's not a resource protection, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. As you see in the boardroom. In the lot itself, it's absolutely gorgeous over here and up there, but it's flat on top. But that area is up there.
Who wants it? Yeah, I'm trying to pull up the maps.
We do have a picture of it on, and there's one in front too, right where you're looking at, the same thing, just not fully recorded. Our season of operation will just be made throughout COVID, and we have two sanitary buildings with two individual bathrooms and shower rooms, who will have handicap accessible. And the trash will be removed in each of the receptacles at each site a couple times a day will be overlooked, that will go into a dumpster that'll not impact acting dump at all, active transportation. We will have it removed and, you know, by a company, and it'll be fenced in, so nobody can go in and use it, we'll have access. We don't plan on living on the campground, we have a nest and a mine away, so there probably won't necessarily be a 24-hour person there, but we will be available and will have the last walk through it between 11:12 and open early rises, so it'll be the late guy, I'll be the early girl. So, there'll always be somebody there.
We don't plan on having seasonals, so I really don't, I honestly personally don't want seasonals. I don't want people sitting out last for a Henry's Day RVs and painful angles out. Not then, but I want, if they do, we do have seasonals, so we'll have to move to a different spot every year, so we're not set up shop in one spot the next 20 years or so, I don't want that.
And we won't be storing anything, any trail that was over.
No storage.
The sun, all the winter. And we've just made it October, so we close down until the end becomes the animals again, which is very important to me, because there's beautiful wildlife up there.
So, this is, this is where we are now. It's just up H-Roe, as you go down the valley into where the swamp, boulder areas, it's just past that. We don't show this lot as being split, but you've got half of it roughly, right?
Um, I think half.
It's pretty much that, it's pretty much that line you see.
Yeah.
Both directions.
Maybe, yeah. You can see where the green and resource protection's in there.
Basically, we're at 32, the bottom of 32, where it's highlighted yellow, that line.
Yeah, kind of, yeah. Like, it goes from 32, the little yellow blocks.
So, it's kind of this area right here?
Correct.
Yeah, with all of the land you can't use, that's our land.
That was what I was saying, you know, that's it.
It was just fine.
We don't mind.
Nope.
There are existing logging trails, it's been in harvest protection, we are going to take it out of that, there's no reason to log any more trees, as they've been logged plenty, we want to keep as many as we can. While they did log, they created kind of natural trails that you can walk through that are kind of just there already, nothing really needs to be created. The road itself does, but some of that's already there for us, so it's really a perfect setup right on the ridge. Complete noise won't be a big deal, because we're up higher, we don't plan to be allowed to bark anybody too loud, won't be allowed to stay there. We have the blue little dots, which were test pits for the septic system, we're still working that out, because it's, we don't know if we need an engineered plan or exactly what we need yet, we need some professionals to come and tell us, but we have very good soil.
And the recommendation was like from you, John, for the pick for those test pits?
We're five.
Yeah, we, well, basically, you know, we, I, you know, we come up with a layout that we wanted for the road, and then the sites, the actual camp sites, and so I tried to pick areas for them to have test pits. We actually had several more than we needed, and we did some, so we have some options as a way to move them. And these, and this is in stone right here, we may not use, we may not need that many, we may not use these, but yeah, so we did several, and it's sort of our own area there. It's just a matter of how the, having the calculation done as to how big the leach fields actually need to be, and, you know, what design they need to be, and so we'll find out, we'll find out at that point, you know, but this is prospectively where we might, you know, want to have them, we're trying to, obviously, we're trying to keep them, those most part, we're trying to keep them away from the sites, although this is just leach fields, so it's, you know, they gotta be, it's a garden, they're just gonna be grassy areas, you know, really, other than the fact you don't want to drive on them, but it really, nothing, nothing could be anything that's a problem. There's some, those kind of orange lines, you see it up near the top there, those are actually the existing logging trails that have been there quite a long time. I went back through the history of the Google Earth, and they've been there for at least 10 years. The wetland that is at the bottom there, or that's, that's all forested wetland there, that's got a 175-foot buffer you see around it. The other one up near the top, that one, that part that's actually on their land is forested wetland, but it is associated with that, the other wetland that's actually, that pond that flourish is out in there, and that one has 200, that's 250-foot buffer. So, this, this already built into this, a lot of buffer between any of the sites and the wetlands.
What are the closest, what's the distance for the closest neighbors?
Right across the street.
Across the street's the closest.
Close, close to street on H-Roe.
Yeah, across 300, that's it.
Yeah, there's nobody to us.
No, it's, it's, you know that on H-Roe, that whoever, that gentleman who built that stone wall, it's like actually perfect?
Yes.
Yeah.
Beautiful, yeah.
The cape, the great cape. And we sent letters out today notifying our butters of our attentions, so they've been on the bucket, they will be on the bucket next week.
How's your line of sight for traffic, John?
Yeah, there's actually, yeah, there's actually a diagram on the plan that shows it.
You got 700 from one way, and what do you want on the other?
We've got Scott Mooney up there checking out, and he had requested it was to Culver for the entrance.
We had line program, you just say this name.
So, we don't want a subdivision, don't need another ground, but don't want to have trees, the trees are absolutely beautiful up there, and I just envision, or we envision a beautiful campground, that's what I'm going to do.
Really foresee the well, or wells, you said? Well, two?
It's gonna be one.
Probably three to four, and don't want part of it located, depending on the distance you need to leave from the septic system, I would imagine, for a commercial-sized septic system.
Yeah, they need to be 300 feet, so we're gonna have to determine where those leach fields are gonna go first, and then we can, you know, maybe determine where the wells are gonna want to go, so.
Oh, three to four wells.
I don't recall having one of these in front of us before Apple Valley.
No, Apple Valley's been around for a while, and they've expanded out, so...
But any, any conversations we've ever had with anybody, I don't recall the need for leach fields, because they would have a pond, right? They would have tanks of limited volume with each RV unit, and then they'd have buggy fife coming in, helping out.
They do have that option.
They do have that option.
That was an option.
The RVs, a lot of these RVs are self-contained.
Yeah.
So, what we'll do with so many sites is that will be a four-inch BBC pipe that they can hook their, they connect their RV to, so they can just sit there for a month and a night, they just drink right in. Leach field is provided by us. We also have a, we'll have two dumping stations on the exit side of the RV park, so when people, if they don't hook up to septic, when they leave, they can offload their, you know, they have gray water and black, black water, yeah, as they leave, which is pretty standard procedure for the waters.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that probably most campgrounds do have, because one thing, there's a wire that you have a certain number of toilets and showers per, for the number of sites you have.
Yeah.
And obviously, those permanent buildings and the showers and toilets are gonna have septic systems, which we have, you know, and again, we show three shower and bathroom buildings here, we don't know for sure yet, we don't need that many, or probably we did more, probably not.
Where are you showing them at?
Those little brown rectangles there, those...
Inside a circle?
Well, there's several there, I can't be sure, too.
Yeah, that one.
That's one, there's one there, and then it's the office, and that's gonna have a laundry in it.
Oh, it's an office. And there's another little room just up to the...
That's made a shed there, that's gonna have a made a shed there, but that will be something that's accessible by the, by the people who use the campground.
And would this be a phased development?
No.
Get it all done?
No.
We wish we could, but the way the road goes, you might, we'd be digging it up anyways, you might as well just, you know, if you're building the road, then, because it, it just would be very hard to go up to go down.
It's, it's, you know, it can be, I mean, it's, it's a lot different than building a subdivision, a campground.
It's pretty basics, it's not...
But it's almost the same thing. It's a 55-block subdivision, by the time we do the road profiles, break up the lots, I mean, you're just not dealing with houses afterwards.
Right.
It's a great use for the property, but...
What do you see the road material?
The bottom section we see on H-Roe, the first section of that's gonna be pavement, just because it's used for trucks and, and getting out. And then from there on, we're gonna just easy grab.
Yeah, there's not really much of a grade, as steep as possibly you could, we said, John, touch us there.
Yeah, if you show them, can you, where the steepest part is, as you go up the road, is right at the beginning, really, really, there's hobby, and that's right in there, is where the steepest part of it is, and so, once you get up on top, it's pretty flat in it. The nice thing about this site is, that's, what you're seeing is a topography, all those lines on both sides, what happens on this site is it's relatively flat on the top and it rains off both ways. And the nice thing is, too, you've got this, we already have a built-in buffer, that's a, that's gonna be a vegetated buffer, because it's, you know, it's already forested, it can't be touched, so, you know, you've got that sort of natural drainage buffer there, you know, again, it's gonna be engineered, they're gonna have to do a stormwater permit and everything, I mean, we don't know yet whether or not we're gonna have to have detention ponds or anything. I suspect not, because this is such a good site for being able to do a vegetated buffer, I mean, it's perfect for, you know...
What do you show us, John?
I, they have this up.
There, we, well, I guess, again, so, we have another package for you, or not, I guess at that point, just in that, we do have this little, this whole thing, but I can share, I can share that with you.
With a little packet, we did put in just some ideas about the park rules and policies that we're gonna have, just so people kind of understand what we're going, what we're trying to head towards, and then there's a picture also, like, where the cabins would look like, and then what the, the office would look like, and, yeah, it might not be red, but it's gonna look like a bar, and then...
I want it red.
Nothing gets red.
No, 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 but I don't want this man to...
So, so doing some homework myself today, looking at, you know, our ordinance thing about campgrounds, one of the thoughts was the amount of ability for RVs to be able to get turned around. Do you foresee that? I mean, I can't tell from looking at something like this, but you've taken that all into account, the idea of enough room, so...
The width of the roads, and then the way, the width of the road's going in, and then they circle around, it's all gonna be one direction.
Well, there's two, but one single road, the loop is one direction.
Yeah, the loop is one.
So, you only go up one side and down the other.
But the main artery will be two lanes.
Yeah, that road, as I showed you, is 24 feet, well, I suggest, why not divide each other? The other thing, too, these sites, because, you know, the actin' on this requires 5,000 square foot site, plus they also require 200 square, 200 square feet of parking, so each, each one of those polygons I designed, they're all 5,200 square feet, which is big, you know, I mean, the scanner requires 1,000 square. I've actually designed, you know, subdivisions and houses that have water, sewer, lots that size. Actually, I designed, let's say, I had 2,500, 50. So, this is, that's a, that's a lot, 5,000 square feet's a lot to have for a campground lot, and so you've got plenty of room there for campus to get in and out.
So, do I see different letters on different sites?
Yeah, there's actually, there's actually a, a legend on there.
Is there a key?
The, the, this, one of the sets of letters has to do with what's the utilities that are provided, there's sewer, there's ones that say SWE, that's sewer, water, electrical, there's ones that are openly water, electric, and as you see, the, up here on the right-hand side, you see what's the tees, those are tent sites, there's, there's tent sites, camper sites, and RV sites. All the RV sites are sewer, water, electric, all the other are sewer, water at least, both the tent sites and the camper sites. Cam, 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 like a camp of trails, so...
There's a water, electric, there's no sewer.
Right, so it's got water, but, and then there's, there's three cabins, yeah, which will be, you know, little cabins.
We're hoping to do probably four, four cabins, actually, is what we're hoping, but this, with the amount we have, it's, it's just a basic, we may end up doing a few less with sewer, if like that, we have one more than we need, and we have the extra septic system, for that one, we're gonna cut that out, you know what I mean? Because, of course, the septic systems aren't going to be cheap, the leach fields and the systems, and if we can kind of do it to the minimum that will give us what we need to do within, you know, then absolutely we'll, so, we haven't, just because we haven't had the engineer do that for us, you don't do it all, there's like this...
There's a formula for, for the, for the amount of water that needs to flow into the septic.
Pumping in, pumping out, 10 sites, I'm really...
Yeah.
And it'll be based on 52 families, so to speak, is that...
Well, it, it, we're looking at 55 sites.
Yeah.
Break it down to, you subtract 10 sites, we're down to about 50, I think it's in one there. And then the cabins, some trucked cabins, so that's five less there, so we're looking at approximately 40, between 40 and 45 RV sites for trailer, and one of these. Now, all of them are gonna have sewer quotas.
Yeah.
I would say, depending on where we're at with the septic system design, between 20 and 30 will...
But they'll all have access to the septic?
Well, if your RV isn't hooked up to the septic, then you're using the shower, the toilet, or something like that.
Or your tank, you can still use the shower.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, it's just a different calibre.
There's quite a few, quite a few, to family, you would have, so it's, it's gonna be pretty big.
Yeah, we looked at the state, stated for the, for the calculation of the, of the septic systems, and I was, I was surprised how many they allow. We ended up, we figured they wouldn't need like two, two showers.
Oh, for the showers themselves, for those facilities, yes, because if it's self, if most of them are hooked up, is that...
They have a own shower in there.
They do, and so they do take that into account, that if it's a self-contained shower, bathroom unit...
They don't need another shower system.
Right.
On site.
Yeah, there's a statement, we can include that too, how they calculate how many sites and what is, what is mandatory for.
It's based on how many people...
How many units, how many, how many sites? Site doesn't say, it says sites.
Most, most of sites will have to be between 20 and 40.
Yeah.
It's like a family.
If, if everything is going Aces for you guys, 125 people could be...
Absolutely, and that's what they calculate on, they calculate on the most amount, so even if we're half full, we still have to be calculating for the most amount.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
We don't expect to be full.
Oh, cool.
It'll be not even...
Thank God.
You know, and this was not really excellent here for that, you know, and they are at high, and, you know, so I think that this is gonna be, you know, the heat, the hot press, and a better spot for that sort of thing, and it doesn't seem like you're gonna have, you know, too much pressure on this site, in that situation.
How far out are you guys to get a plan to submit, do you think, John?
What else do we need?
Well, you have the engineer.
What's that?
You have that engineer.
The septic locations need to be nailed down, the well rotations and things, the list of, I think we had 20, 21 things the other day, we were going through to get on the plane, we've got three or four of them added, so...
So, we need all that before we can submit?
Right, then, you, we kind of need to know where the septics are going, and where the wells are going to be held on the plane.
Yeah, well, the, you know, it depends on you get on with the engineers, when they got, so they're gonna do the road profile, they're gonna do, like you say, the septics, we can figure out where those go, then we can figure out where the wells go, they're gonna end up submitting a stormwater permit to the state, but before, by the time they go, by the time they submit it, they'll already have all this information. I suppose we could resubmit at that point, we won't have the permit in hand yet then, but all the stuff that we submitted for the permit will be available at all.
For the stormwater?
Yeah, we're gonna have the whole grading and, and all drainage, and all that's calculated for the stormwater permit, so at that point, you know, we'll resubmit, and all will be lacking is the actual permit in hand, because obviously DEP does 90 days to do that, so...
And they should be underneath the threshold for stormwater anyway, that's our goal.
No, we're underneath the threshold, no, without underneath the threshold of stormwater, we're underneath the threshold for a site, that's what we're staying underneath, no, we're, no, we're definitely, and, and that's because this is, this is in the...
Water Chisholm.
Water Chisholm, Moss Lake, which you only need 20,000 square feet of purpose, and you go along this way with that, so we definitely just stormwater permit, that's, that's, as I say.
But I'm comfortable moving forward, while you guys are working with the state on that, it's just, I think you really need to lock in where the septics and wells are going.
Oh, yeah, definitely, and like I said, by the time we get the, by the time they get all that stuff submitted to the DEP, we'll have everything.
Yeah.
And the only thing that would change is if the DEP decided they wanted something, change at that point, but I mean, yeah, other than that, we're gonna have, we'll have everything else together. As far as when that, I can't tell you, because that's gonna be up to the engineers, I don't know how busy they are, I would assume.
They talk to Austin there.
Pretty busy.
Well, no, they were, they were, they contacted Austin, they're already moving forward.
Okay, fine, so, I don't know, you know, it could be pretty unmonitored, and they could do it. My, my experience with subdivisions and doing a stormwater permit is it takes a month or two, and, but I'm not sure, I haven't worked a lot with the DHPM, so...
I think the big thing tonight was just if something jumped out to any of the board members that looked that we hadn't thought of already, and we'll keep working, getting this going in the right direction, and hopefully, next month or so...
Anybody foresee anything that, Kevin, any ideas that could possibly not let this happen, because we're putting a lot of money into it, and if it's not gonna happen, we kind of...
Yeah, I don't blame you. How about you guys, Kevin, your only choice?
I think the biggest flag is traffic count, you know, the amount of vehicles, and again, ideally for you, or worst-case scenario, is it's filled every day, from day to day, but realistically, it's just those three weekends that maybe it's full, and then it's the highs and lows for it, but the only thing I see is the traffic going in and going out, and it's not very far up the road, and the biggest thing is really the butter across the street is the only one that's gonna notice any real thing, some people on H-Roe may notice more campers going up it, but I think I'd rather see a camper going by my house than an empty triaxle or dump trailer, you know, and probably the campers aren't going by at 5:00, 6:00 in the morning.
Or at 60 miles an hour.
No, because their front porch is 6 feet from the road.
Yeah.
I'm the, I'm the first one that, that will say, they're having truck on the road. It's using a J-Bring. Always up. So, no, I appreciate your time. This, this is the worst side about the project. We really want to do this.
Great, I'm ecstatic about it. I love you guys, to see the land. I don't know when you're able to get up there, but just for a sidewalk, but if you're actually physically up on the land, you can just, it's gorgeous. Where the new main road goes, is that all cleared, or do you have to clear that?
The main road, that, okay, is that area somewhat already clear?
So I think when we're ready, once we get the submitted plan, then maybe just the center line of the road generally flagged, and I wouldn't say every lot labeled, but maybe every 10. We're at lot 10, lot 20, lot 30. Just so we get a general idea of where we're at, where we're going, and then we can follow the map and...
How about an idea of where the buildings might be?
Yeah, okay.
Definitely, where the buildings.
Yep.
Might be.
Quick question about the geology there, John.
Yes.
Is this pretty much like an escrow, ramble and the slopes?
Yeah, yeah.
It's, you know, it's each line, they palm on the sides.
And as you can, you can see here, you can see here that, you know, that some of this come onto a line, it's probably a quick line apart here. But then when you get over here, you see the contour line, see this is going downhill this way, and then it's also going down here this way. So then all this is going downhill. Then, you know, again, here, you know, this, this steep part of this road is just down below here, but as you can see, most of this is quite flat, just pretty flat contours along here.
So once you're a slope, John, on the, on the tail segment of this from, from the intersection where they drove up to the loop?
Ah, actually, no, the steep part is just, the steepest part is right in here.
That's where the current road is right now.
Oh, still there, yeah. Steepest part of the road is right in here, and you see this, actually, there's a contour line there, and there's not one until you get way down here. This is really flat down here. So, no, no, it actually goes right up, that's a flat, and it's not until you get in there 100 feet or so before.
So there's only a 10% difference?
10% difference.
10% grade?
Grade, 10% grade.
In the very steepest part, and the 10% grade is where, very short distance, I'd say less than 10 feet, so.
Thank you, John.
Anything else, anybody? Joey, Ariana, Jane, can I possibly have a couple more of these to give to two people that are not here, we want to, we'll be back. Somebody will replace them, I don't know how long it's going to take.
I, you know, I have a complete application pack, it has, it has the, the building species and the apps, it has the storage stuff, it has all that, and, you know, we'll be submitting that for the rest of the night, already took that off together.
Can I speak, can I talk about that?
Well, like, like he said, we kind of snuck in here.
Well, it's good to keep the momentum going. Just in case there's something huge, and then just add this, that you gave tonight into your package for the false middle thing.
So your locations of the well? Or you just want the numbers of well?
I would say locations, because that's going to dictate where the septics are, or vice versa, and how it's all going to work. Mitigation areas.
Yeah, we see a septic at the site, or approximately complete fill locations.
Yeah, those are marked.
Yeah.
And knows where the septic is going, you know that. The one inside, we may not go there because we might want to weld there, so we might move that to a location.
But Ken, you're talking about not even having a sidewalk until we submit, aren't you?
We'd want to, I won't say the final plan, but the application plan that we're going to...
Right, so we'll have all that for a public...
Yeah, yeah, we're not confused with revision 1 and revision 7. Someplace it'd probably be a maintenance building, not so much the maintenance shed, but a utility building where the pumps and tanks and things like that, it could be in a shower house, toilet house, or maybe there's another building going in up there for the well tanks. We may incorporate those right into the shower, toilet rooms, because you have a lot of heaters will be in there with those, and just where the wells are going, who you're pushing it to.
I think, I would just think the sidewalk, just because of the weather right now, it's going to come in, don't be, two feet of snow.
After a foot of snow, it doesn't matter. To me. The, the intention hopefully is to beat mosquito season for the sidewalk.
Flap flies, flap flies.
That's our goal.
When do you see yourselves opening doors?
Probably just change today, because it's going to take longer and longer. We're hoping next year.
Next year.
Yeah, in, in a perfect world, I'd like to start digging from the snow now, and start doing this, and then all, work that all, spring, summer, fall, and then the fall and year will come. Be perfect.
Let me ask you this, if we're all, get all this together, and we have, and we have the application that has been made for stormwater, would you approve on condition of the D E P permit?
I'm okay, except in the application, doing the sidewalk, going through all the hearings and things like that. I would think by then you'd have your D E P permit.
You'd be that possible?
Probably four hundred was.
But that, I guess that's what I'm asking. If we have, if we have all, everything else, we don't have, is done, like, we don't have the permit in hand, they do have 90 days, and I assume that probably, you know, I remember the days when subdivisions were booming, and they took the full 90 days, sometimes more.
All they have to do is send it back and stop the clock again.
Right.
But I, I don't see any huge red flags. I think it's a great use for the property, and be great to see another business, and they could own this, this type of business.
All right.
You good?
Yeah. All right, guys. Thanks for sharing. What's going on? You've heard all these rumors?
These are all bad, but... So you missed out.
Have a good evening.
You as well. That was a long 15.
Thank you for taking...
50, they say 50. Okay, next, um... Let's see, we can jump to timber harvesting with Steve here, see if we can take care of that.
You're in charge.
Yeah, all right, let's, let's do that. Let's jump over this for a second. Timber harvesting, and you're having your full, the, the plan for the change that we have been discussing over the last, for a long time. And, uh, to try and lighten it all up in the state. Everybody there?
Everybody good?
Yeah.
All right. If we remember back, I think, if we remember back, when we finally took the vote in early December, you know, we had agreed that we were going to go with what the verage was from the state. And this particular piece of paper lines up with what is in the state, we believe. So if you look at it close enough, you will see on the land use chart that there's the three changes, going from R4s to P, and then the R4 itself has been eliminated, but note that says reserved and all we're saying there, so that we don't have to change all the numbering things as we go forward to the town, you know, in June, where we have to go through everything just because of a number change. So we'll leave that, who knows what could go in there at some point in time. Backside, you can see the definitions, you can see, again, the first sentence stays, then the rest gets crossed out, and then the, the additional part added in refers to removal of timber can't take place in terms of a construction within the shoreland area. Which can't be laid in clear fact, just because I think you want to build a house next to the lake.
Is that section 15P that's going to be from chapter 1000, so we probably need to change that?
Which one?
Oh, okay, yes. So take out that reference, or see if...
Then we just slip in a zoning reference in there.
Okay.
And then the final one is 5.19 timber harvesting, and again, it's going to just take accepted words that are in the statewide standards. Steve, taking a look at it, you, you good?
Yeah, at first blush, the only thing that I have would be a couple of quick questions to say, are you actually adding the word reserved on the first page of the document that put in? But the top bit has underlined, you know, it's a word to add.
Yeah.
That would be added, right, just to show that number four is staying there, and if down the road we're adding something, we can use that line to add something.
ADU.
It's a blank.
It's a blank.
Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Right, that way we don't have to move everything out. Move everything, and then books never... Yes.
Okay, so what the process of this is going to be is to wrap this, go over it, look back at what we have. So this definition that you added from timber harvesting not pertaining to the shoreland zone sections, that underlined section, did that actually come from state law? So I think that's pretty close to what we have.
1000.
Okay. The only question that I have too is to say that, strictly speaking, statewide standards refers to the state's policy of deriving the timber practice within 250 feet of these resources, small letters, not capital R, resource protection zones. So the only question that I would have, it might be that that 519 would be timber harvesting, colon, and then some other word or phrase that would imply all timber harvesting. Statewide standards, in a common sense, means statewide standards for all of timber harvesting, but capital S statewide standards, as the state is using, it is pertaining to all of that verage that we adopted last year, which is very specifically trying to avoid using the words resource protection or shoreland zone. And the other section that quote unquote statewide standards is not covering, the Main Forest Practice Act does. So the only thing I'm looking at is 519 might have a slightly modified word of statewide standards, because I'm saying the state is using the phrase statewide standards to imply that adopted badge, which only covers basically what we would have called resource protection zone cutting in the past. Not necessarily all the land.
We stole that from chapter 1000 from the D E V two as well, that's exactly how they added it.
Exactly. So, so I'm just not sure that, I would want to make sure that we're using that phrase in the right way, that we're implying all timber harvesting across all acreages of the town, following this timber harvest ordinance as defined by the state. Does that make sense? But not necessarily by definition statewide standards, if that's appropriate. And you and, I mean, and Oliver and I can look at that too, with the state or, you know, kind of bring...
So to clear it up for you, you would just have 5.19 timber harvesting, colon, and that's it, and then we go 5.19.1?
Generally speaking, yes. Like, we're trying to imply it's timber harvesting across the entire town, as is defined by main timber harvest law. But I'm just saying, right now, because of that whole big booklet that got adopted, statewide standards has become a proper term to them, and I want to, I want to make sure that this is not implying that the only timber harvest rules that we have in the town are within 250 feet of an RP zone or a shoreland, where timber harvesting covers the entire town, but the state has been using that term specifically as RP style buffer areas.
Would, did I clarify, do you think, throw this up to Ken and Steve, do I clarify anything?
So I want it for the whole town, yes, because I don't know if that's the right phrase of word.
Word. To put in brackets that, um, uh, the commercial timber harvesting is not impacted by the town's definition of wetlands, or the town's protection of wetlands less than 10 acres. I would not recommend that. I just, okay. Well, can you, and can you work out this language so that we can move forward to this?
I think I'd go right upstream to the D E P and the Main Forest Service. I'll send this up, see what the issue with the verage is and...
Isn't that what you land use charge is saying?
What's that? The statewide standard word, is that what you're asking?
Well, permitted.
Right, permitted.
I think he's just, we just don't want to be confusing that you have to do option one or option two in the middle of no use, that's not resource protection or shoreland zone or any of that. And I understand, we just want to clarify that these standards are only in the protected areas that the Forest Service deems needs to be protected. Because I can't use resource protection or shore, we use the word, right, I can't use the word.
So we made it very clear.
So no touch base with those guys.
Yeah, this is, this is, it's kind of like a housekeeping question of what word to use that doesn't make it confusing or pull act ordinance back in. So then, so if we have this wrapped, we would then kick it back up to the Main Forest Service. They would run it up to Augusta. We still have the option or potential chance at shooting for that exemption of the notification coming to the town, which they've already kind of said, we don't like that idea, but maybe we can talk about it with Augusta, if you remember.
Yeah, it's pretty much a...
It won't work out.
It is what it is. It's exactly for the state or it's not at all.
Right, okay. Again, I don't personally believe that that's a verb to anyone, and it shouldn't be to Augusta, but if they've said no, and they won't accept the whole rest of this package because of that, then I guess it'll be...
Sorry.
But yeah, this verage, this outside, a little small, you know, housekeeping is quite close.
So we get to a public hearing about this anyway, before we finally get to, you know, June.
Yeah, we'll shake it out in the next couple of weeks, get it ready and...
So would you like me specifically to run this past Augusta in the meantime, or, I mean, at least at the local level?
See how the towns have it, we're already there. Okay. I think the most confusing part is where our resource protection is expanded out.
Right.
Do you want to hear about Kennybunk or York about?
Uh, most of them don't have very much timber harvesting, they don't have a lot of big lots, so, um, the more I talked to York, the more I got confused. Because they talked about, we've only had a couple of permits come in since we've gone to statewide standards, so I didn't know if it was just the notification, or they were requiring additional permits, but yes, they were statewide standards, and both of them, Kennybunk, I said, said they don't really have that much commercial timber harvesting. It's always they're changing it for development.
Well, that may be true, but didn't, kind of again, York have accepted statewide standards?
I don't think Kennybunk...
No? No? Okay.
Uh, York just went to it, but Kennybunk has multiple resource protection areas.
All right, you good?
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks for coming.
All right, we're back up to the business. Thank you. And we are number three, we're...
That's yours, right? Do you remember this sad face on mine?
I see.
See, you didn't have none of yours.
I didn't see a sad face on you.
Oh, did?
Yeah, I do, yeah. We know who's special.
So there's a conflict in the definition of subdivision and the subdivision regulations. It kind of came up on the subdivision, um, millstone. So in the subdivision regulations, it exempts lots over 40 acres from being called a lot. So what they did down there is they had three lots over 40 acres, so they weren't calling those lots, and they had one lot that was left, so it was only a one lot, division of land. Our ordinance, zoning ordinance calls anything's a lot, 1 acre or 100 acres, it's a lot. So state law used to say lots over 40 acres were exempt, and the town could be more restrictive. They've turned it around to say lots greater than 40 acres are still a lot for calculating subdivisions. And if the town wants to opt out of that, they can. So we haven't, we, in our zoning ordinance, we call a lot greater than 40 acres still a lot for calculating division of land in a, in triggers subdivision. So our subdivision ordinance, we just need to strike out that area. So in the subdivision, page nine in definitions?
What's the, what's the effect of that?
How about that number somewhere?
Is that the subdivision regulation?
Page nine? Page nine?
Page nine.
And what's the effect that you're achieving with that?
So, such as the subdivision down on Milton Mills at one oh nine? Technically, they thought they were exempt because the lots were greater than forty acres. Don't, so they're not called a lot, so they didn't need to commit to subdivision review. They just divide land up.
So we need to change that.
You want to throw our definition and...
You have that new definition?
Well, in the subdivision reg, which is great because it's not in the zoning ordinance.
I'm looking at the bottom of page nine.
Yep, yep, a lot of forty acres or more acres shall not be counted as a lot for the purpose of...
And we want to retain that as, as being counted as a lot.
Well, that's what I would suggest, that's how our zoning ordinance has been geared.
Yeah.
So you don't do...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm missing that now that I found it on my definition section here.
Yeah, you don't have that definition?
Well, I have the subdivision definition, I missed what you suggested that...
All right, so the second line there says a lot of forty acres or more shall not be counted as a lot.
All right.
So not is the only word. Lot forty acres shall be counted. So a lot, I guess, my suggestion would be to strike out and remove lot. So the subdivision regulations, we can change at a public hearing post seven days in advance at our level, so, um...
Can we do it when we finally get to a public hearing of subdivision?
About the same night? I would say so, yeah.
I mean, something this small?
Yeah.
Really need a public hearing about that subdivision?
I mean, we can achieve it and be done with it too, just as easy, it's fairly simple versus adding it to more like, um, I don't think I have any bigger subdivisions coming through, although one of the people that purchased one of the lots down in that subdivision were arguing the case sprinkler systems, they didn't want to put the sprinklers, so they were saying, we're not part of it, and like, well, you have a subdivision, you're not part of the subdivision, that should have been an argument for the developers, that when they looked at it, they realized the zoning ordinance was more stringent, so we go with the more stringent. And I suppose, if I get a chance, I can kind of go through, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in this, but this was just a major one for holes that we want to clean up. That's like a winter project.
Yeah, well, we're halfway through.
And it was an early winter.
So, so if we're talking public hearing, can we at least tend to be thinking in terms of doing it when we do the forestry, the timber harvesting one?
Well, if we want to get it off our list of things to do, we could post it if the board agrees, that's a direction to go, we could post it, have it at the next public hearing, probably nobody's going to show up, we'll have the same crowd as we do right now, and then we're done with it, and then we don't have to add to it for the other side of the thing, just getting it done.
Getting it done, okay.
Yeah. Because we still got to post it.
All right, yeah, so we're going to set the clock on whatever the Tuesday is that we decide to do it?
Thursday.
Thursday, whatever.
Just making sure we're all down the same night. Uh, February first would be our next meeting.
Oh, we had a whole month.
So you're...
Fourteen days, does that give us enough time to put it in the paper? It needs to be seven days in advance.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. All right, so... Anything else on that?
Nope, that was it. It's as simple as crossing out one three-letter word. It's three letters.
We might not even have to print the whole number, no?
We just all cross them out.
Those of you that have page numbers.
All right, consider warrant article, I've got page numbers in this thing. Consider warrant article regarding additional dwelling units.
So this is something, I'm just looking for direction on the board, so we don't, we don't put a lot of time in it, and the board says absolutely positively not. We kind of looked at this about ten, twelve years ago for a secondary dwelling unit on the property, and we require twice as much land, twice as much road frontage, or fifty percent of the road frontage. It really hasn't been utilized, and when we were looking at that, it was an elderly couple that had lived in town for years, and the kids were moving back to take care of them or something like that, and it hasn't been utilized, but it keeps coming back up for, for this. So a lot of towns have these additional dwelling units, and one of the towns, which I don't really want to go the direction they went, was, um... You can, uh, to have that additional dwelling unit, somebody has to be ill and old and through the zoning board, and there's a lot of restrictions on it. I was thinking on the lines of, it's a permitted use, um, it's restricted, it's allowed in all zones except for shoreland zone, the laws be resource protection would be permitted in those zones. The lot has to be a conforming lot, it's not going on a non-conforming lot. The additional dwelling unit would be limited to somewheres between six hundred and eight hundred square feet. Well, it's just, the intention is the in-law apartment.
Yep.
So, I mean, eight hundred square feet is still pretty good.
This would be a detached unit?
Uh, some, some towns do allow it as a detached accessory, I mean, that would be something the board can think about.
They do have, they do have these new, um, that...
Tiny house.
Not the tiny house, no, no, oh God, who wants to live in a closet? Sorry. Um, no, usually between seven fifty and a thousand square feet. They're popping up in Connecticut, um, a lot.
Yep.
And, um, yeah, in Connecticut, that's, they look quite...
Is it like a cottage, a second, probably?
Yeah, a second, well, they're very fancy-spanky looking, some of them, I mean, uh, but they are, they're basically a three-room unit.
One of the towns limited it to three rooms and a bathroom, that's it. And I was just trying to keep it simple, a lot of towns require it to be somebody's blood relative and this and that. One was when the person, the elderly person dies and moves on, you have to rip the unit out. I was trying to stay away from all that because I don't want to go checking to see who lives where. Exactly. You ever have to register it every year and...
There would be nothing in your, what you've done as far as entryway?
A couple of them say it has to have the appearance of a single-family home. Uh, the only thing I could think of is, you know, when you've got two entranceways on the front of the house, it looks like a duplex, I don't know if that really matters. Uh, the, sometimes the fewer words, the better it is, otherwise it gets confused. And a lot of towns had a percentage, it can only be thirty-five percent of the house, well, that means they have to put an addition on before they come in to get the permit to do it, and I was just trying to avoid all that. Limited to X amount of square feet, and it has to be owner-occupied, the owner should live in the place, uh, the septic would be brought up, it would meet the building code for fire, separation, egress.
Essentially, if you're talking four hundred to six hundred feet, so the square feet...
I guess six to eight.
Okay, you did that. I mean, you're, and you're talking one additional bathroom, then essentially the septic is designed for two bathrooms, right?
For the new unit, but the...
Well, for, for in a typical house.
Two is the minimum.
Okay.
Three is probably average, four we see five.
So by adding a third one, then a typical septic, we're dealing with?
We would require a design for a new system, or the designer could write us a letter that said, uh, the existing system is functionally properly, it's currently a three-bedroom system, they're eliminating one bedroom in the house and creating this and having to... If we got a letter from that, we're fine with that, or you upgrade your system. Because we always, if there's a three-bedroom house, there's four bedrooms in the house, maybe five, depending on what's there, and, uh, so we go by the floor planes they give us, so they can eliminate some, if the kids move out or whatever, and you get rid of a couple of bedrooms, school offices, libraries, and then you put this dwelling unit on, and the parents move in, or worst-case scenario, the kids move back with the parents, or however it is, um, we just don't have a neck of this and for that in our ordinance, we have a two-family, but that becomes more, we need a good-sized lot for that.
Is there any reason why we don't have anything about these types of apartments?
We've avoided it.
Just that we haven't, no other reason that we haven't done.
There is the footnote on our land use chart, number nine, on page nineteen, and that's where we cover it.
Yep, so you're looking at...
My memory serves me, Ken, that this was crafted so that it met the needs of that instance that arose a decade or more ago.
Yeah, teetering fifteen years, I think.
I'm trying to find out where that footnote is in the land use chart. Oh, I see it now, yeah.
Yeah. Nineteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Two single-family residential units on one lot, last, last line under residential structures and uses. It applies to, just about across the board. This really hasn't gone at all, except one instance?
Yeah, we've got it, but it hasn't been able to work except that one lot. With at least three hundred feet of frontage.
I think as baby boomers are getting up there, we see more of it, really. It's a... I mean, we see more fifty-five communities, we see more families moving back together. I mean, this kind of building hasn't gone on since after World War Two.
I think that footnote nine is confusing.
If we were to change it, I, I would change it in regards to some, um, real-world examples that might have come across the desk that have been prevented by its, maybe this one or that is too rigorous.
Right, and that's the direction I was going with, as long as it's a conforming lot, I'm okay with it. How does nine read to you guys?
Well, I'm looking at it, thinking that they're talking specifically about building a second unit.
Yep, detached second unit.
I mean, that would be something that perhaps we could discuss if this was going to go forward, but doesn't necessarily mean that that's what we're talking about, because we think it's...
I was thinking attached in this case, yeah.
I, I... Does it cover it, maybe?
Well, I get confused when I read that, except that on a lot of two hundred thousand square feet or more with at least three hundred feet of frontage.
And it says you already need enough land for two lots right there, pretty much, because this, yeah, it could be...
Yeah.
The lot size per residential dwelling unit, so that, that's the initial one, and the one in the building shall, I mean, or exceed the minimum lot size requirement, which is like two acres or whatever, for this district, except that on a lot of two hundred thousand square feet or more with at least three fifty frontage. Yeah. I don't know if we need to, I mean, I understand the two hundred thousand square feet or more because that would cover the four acres.
But why wouldn't you just...
But I don't know if we need that in there, and they just kind of love it.
Well, and you just divide your property.
Well, that says that the lot shall never be divided.
Right.
But if it's big enough to be divided, like why would you...
You don't have the road frontage.
You don't have the road frontage.
Because if you're running two fifty per road frontage per lot, then you need five hundred, but, so I, I know when we've used this before, except that, in the idiots' family so they necessarily want to divide it. Then you probably...
Isn't it less confusing if it's, if they're attached, so you don't end up with a situation that you're going to cover?
Really, yes.
So I think as I was reading that, you need double for what you need. Except that on a lot of two hundred thousand or three hundred fifty square feet, you can get away with it. So we can take a look at that a little bit, too.
Is there another citation where we talk about?
Right, it's kind of like hidden in the land use chart, you don't even notice it, so this would be, there was something that kind of cleaned it out just subtly in the rest of the town.
That's in the multifamilies, I have page sixty-seven, about the box was off, five pages on the last one.
How about sixty-seven, multifamily dwelling units? What was the other?
Might have to give a bunch of that.
Oh, no, not the orange one.
It is kind of surprising that we haven't had more inquiries about this.
We get a lot in our office, and we get more and more for just what, as they would call the in-law apartment.
Yeah.
There's a difference right there.
It's funny where my, it was just where my daughter, because her house has an in-law apartment, and, and on her street, there's three, and yet around here, we don't have it, it's just the strangest thing, and, uh, in her case, her mother-in-law lives above the garage.
That's what my daughter has, an apartment for us.
And it's entry from inside to get to it, and everybody uses the mudroom to go inside the house, and then stairs go up, and door goes in, just to separate them out.
So this attached one is saying you need a full-size lot plus fifty percent more, uh, lot size and road frontage.
All right, okay.
Five fourteen one, page sixty-seven, yellow book. So as we started looking at a lot of other towns, as long as it's a conforming lot, then I don't really see an issue adding a small little apartment, and the intention would be for family members as people come in, but we know as people move on that the apartment's still going to be there, you're not going to rip it out, so...
It's the kind of thing that probably is going on already.
Yeah, yeah. Then when you see landlord's going to jail from acting, we don't have any apartment, so...
Well, say it was, say it was attached to the initial unit, and they could, they could rent the small unit, per se, but if it was detached, they couldn't, isn't that how it works in acting? Like, if you had two units, you couldn't rent the one and live in the other one, but if you're living in the, the same house, you can rent part of it, isn't that...
Well, if they're legal, you could rent either way.
So you could live in the one and then turn the in-law apartment, that's a detached unit, with a separate sector, separate and everything, you could rent that out.
Yeah, so you'd need twice as much road frontage, twice as much lot area and stuff, and that part you might as well just provide the lot.
Right, because you'd fall under a different stipulation if you started renting, so you'd have to come back to the board, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah. So if it was a, a two-family, I would, owner-occupied, I wouldn't care if the existing owners moved into the brand-new little quiet apartment or stayed in the big bomb die. owners moved into the brand new little quiet apartment or stayed in the big part of the house. A lot of them will get a certain percentage of square footage for the units to keep it as an accessory, but if the new part becomes the primary and the old part's accessory, well, alone in addition. I mean, it's hard to think of everything that's going to come up in it. Like I say, a lot of them had percentage of the building, but I'd just go with square footage.
That would, that's the other thing in Connecticut, if you have one that's no longer used for family members, you take the stove up, it's no longer a separate living unit.
The kitchens in the basement, the water homes. Only one apartment for situation.
So, so if we were to go further with this idea, um, again, for lack of a better word, for in-law apartments, would it fit into this multifamily section?
I think that's where we could put it, yeah. And we'd probably use footnote four in the land use chart that's being...
And have that not really anywhere near footnote nine, purposely?
In a midnight, if you want to cover it, use some language for a, not a detached.
Nine would be cleaned up to be detached, maybe it might take a year, so we do it in two steps and not get too confusing.
Yeah.
Just keep it simple, we're just trying to allow in-law apartments, or, and if you say in-law apartments now, instantly somebody's got to be related, and it really has to be my in-laws.
Right.
Or somebody's in-laws.
You could make that point, put it in quotations.
Nobody can get it.
No?
Yeah. Uh, so it's just...
But if you start using all these other terms, maybe they, oh, you mean in-law apartment.
So, uh, the terminology most places we use in this, additional dwelling unit. It's not a two family because it's restricted down to, you got a lot of restrictions on it.
And so when the explanation comes, you don't think the term in-law apartment's going to come up?
That's going to be what everyone's going to call it then. So it's really deregulation because now it's not allowed, now we just want to allow it.
All right, any reason why we can't go forward with that then?
Uh, just looking for the board to say, yeah, it's a good idea.
What do you think? Anybody?
Put some time into it.
Let's go forward.
All right, you can research that then. All right, next. All right, Arnie's not here.
He used up all the arts, Jim, while he was here, he's letting it go.
If Arnie showed up, I don't know what, what happened.
But we left it with all kinds of stuff, it seems, and I would have thought he would have been here the next day. All right, um, anybody else have anything? Out of order and everything else, but I think we covered everything. Then, is there a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Good. Good deal, thanks everybody. Thanks for doing that.